Good evening and welcome to tonight's September 3 city council meeting for City of Half Moon Bay. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Mueller.
Here.
Councilmember Alafano.
Here.
Councilmember Patridge.
Here.
Councilmember Fraser.
Here.
Mayor Walczek.
Here, please join me in the pledge. Thank you very much. Moving on to proclamations and presentations, I believe we have none this evening. Correct? Thank you. Mayor's announcements of community activities. I have a few things to note and if you have any others, please feel free to chime in when I'm done here. So, of course, every Saturday, in the Saturday 9:00 AM, is Farmer's Market. And I'm just reconfirming with Vice Mayor Mueller, those are indeed fresh vegetables? Yes, okay. And flowers. And great time for all. So that's a wonderful thing to do on Saturday mornings. I want to make everybody aware of the Dog Park fundraiser, which is happening on Saturday, September 7th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Dog Park. It was festivities for dogs and puppies and to raise money for some equipment for the park. Also make everybody aware of Taste of the Coast, which is Sunday, September 22nd, which typically happens in the Sea Crest School Gym. That's to support senior coast siders and all the goodies from the coast side restaurants are available there. The Coastal Cleanup Day is September 21st for beach cleanup and I think you pretty much can find about that online, also just or just show up at one of the main beach entrances. There's always a crew available there. And last thing, just to make everybody know that our Coastal Repertory Theater, The Diary of Anne Frank, is starting September 13th. Any other items? One other item of note, I'm going to add to my -- actually, is it another time? No, it's not the time. So, let's see. Moving on from there to report out from closed session, I believe we had a closed session. So, Kyle?
Earlier this evening, the council met in closed session to discuss negotiation of purchase of real property at 500 Stone Pine Road. There were no reportable actions from the closed session.
Thank you very much. Moving on to city council reports, Councilmember Fraser.
Thank you. Attended the council of cities last week and just of note, a great place to visit is the historic Folger Stables in Woodside. That was where we had our meeting. But it's open to the public, it's free, it's a working stable, they've got horses in there and this was part of the original Folger Estate. So the stables were built in the 1920s and half of it is horses and the other half is a museum, giving the history of part of San Mateo County, but also old time farming and raising horses and it's just absolutely beautiful. It was a Woodside and a public partnership to reestablish that. So that's something to do, take your kids over or just visit Woodside. It's right off of Woodside Road at Hutter Park.
Thank you. Councilmember Patridge.
I only had one meeting, it was a CMEC meeting. We talked about the bicycle money that's going to be allocated. We also talked about the shuttle that we approved at TA and then we also talked about MTC and A-BAG and about all the new rules and regulations that there are imposing onto the city. And it was, the reason why we have an opportunity to do that is that the gal from Redwood City, Alicia, is on MTC, so we're able to give her our concerns and things. So it's been a really good thing for us to be able to do that. And we did approve some more money to do some more NPDS, but we're running out of money for NPDS, John. So, just wanted to let you know that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Alafano.
Yes, I'm ready. On the 23rd of August, on a Friday, the Chamber holds a business roundtable, fourth Friday of each month, at Its Italia, 9:00 in the morning. And this month, or the last meeting, we focused on the bridge report, the Main Street Bridge, which was put together by city staff. And we discussed all nine options and tried to explain as best we could the impact of each option in terms of closure possibly of the Main Street for any period, the financial implications to the city and any other key factors. I think it was a very helpful meeting to then go around the room and hear from the people what their priorities were. And from my perspective, it was basically they were looking for minimal closure and wanting to know, and we didn't have this in detail, which option produced the most or the least amount of noise, dust and so forth. So I think it was a good start of trying to talk to the business owners in town, see what their concerns are and then discuss the options so that they're more informed than they might have been otherwise. The same night, we had the council of cities dinner in Woodside, again, a great venue. The stable was amazing. The horses blew me away, they're just amazing animals. And then basically all, last week, I was up in the Lafco conference and it was good for me because it's an eye opener for me not knowing exactly, you know, what Lafco does. So it was very helpful. And there was one gentleman gave a talk about the changing demographics, the older folks and the people that don't want to drive cars, the younger people and so forth. And I would love to have him come here and give that same presentation because I think, especially as we're getting ready to do the general plan, I think we need to be thinking about how this could be changing, how we look at certain areas in town instead of just the standard 5,000 or 7,000 foot lot that we were used to in the past. So I'll see if I can't get ahold of him, see if he's available.
Great, thank you. And Vice Mayor Mueller.
Yeah, I think we've been very, excuse me, very fortunate that we've had Councilmember Patridge and now Councilman Alafano on Lafco. That's a big time, that's wonderful, so congratulations there. It's interesting, we talked about NPDS because going back many, many years ago, our water board held up the permit for the East Span of the San Francisco Bay Bridge. I'm giving a little trivia here. And so, at that time, because the Toll Plaza, they were just going to discharge all the water into the bay. Caltrans came and they were not very happy with us or myself and staff and so they raised some pretty big cane about it. And I did get invited to the first piling driving at the East Bay Span, so I signed my name to Farmer John onto the first piling that went in for that. So that's kind of special. And I guess that's, and then I did predict, and I kind of won the coffee pool, I predicted 12, 13 years ago that this would be about a $6 billion project and I was pretty close, you know, because they were saying 3, 4. And then I was informed this morning that I did have an invitation to the chain cutting yesterday, but I was informed this morning about it. So I don't know if it goes back to the 12 years ago, but they do have a card for me or a badge for me and I go, "Thanks for letting me know Tuesday morning." So anyway, I guess I got punished there, so. Anyhow, little trivia and humor there, but I still have my name on the first piling if anybody wants to go to the bottom of the bay and find that. I think very special, last week, we had a great opportunity on the coast where a U.S. Representative Jackie Speer came to the coast. And I just, I'm always just so pleased that we have such a great relationship with our elected officials and we always have. Half Moon Bay has always had a good relationship. We don't agree on everything, but, I mean, she started at New Leaf, then she went over to Farm Bureau and met with a lot of our ag community there and different leaders. Betty Stone from the Farmer's Market about permitting and all those issues. And then she went to John Juisty's farm, then she went north to David Leia at Cabrillo Farms operation, and then she went to Rocket Farms. I mean, this lady, our representative, spent all day on the coast and then she came to our place. And we all kind of have like our secret little pumpkin that Representative Speer wanted to see, so we went down there. And our staff are amazing and I had a really good education from an elected official on leadership and tough decisions because we all got a tough decision coming up soon. And so she shared with me some of those things about tough decisions and lo and behold, my secret pumpkin is on U.S. Representative Speer's Facebook page. So I guess it's not a secret anymore, but I'm just, I'm just so pleased that we have such a great representative and we always have with Anna Schu and with Jackie now and, I mean, she was in the dirt and the mud with her city girl shoes on, so that's the kind of leadership we're getting with our U.S. Representatives. So it was a special day and she always has a smile on her face and, boy, she spent all day walking everywhere. So thank you to her staff and to Jackie for coming out and visiting with all of us on the coast.
Can I ask the chair, John? John, I noticed that in the Daily Journal, there was a fairly large article about John and Jackie, about the federal labor, you know, trying to get the old visceral kind of program back. What are the chances of getting that kind of back? Because it sure would help the farmers as far as having a labor force.
Just quickly, without a doubt, immigration reform is very challenging and I don't think it's going to pass personally this year and my hunch is. And to bring a guest worker program into, back into existence like we have memories of in the 40s and the 50s, not going to happen. So, and I will be honest with you, there are big concern with farm labor right now. A shortage, sprout harvest is starting for all our friends and neighbors, pumpkin harvest is starting, supposed to start this morning, but I tire on the tractor, but we need people. Yep, so, thank you.
Thank you, John. A good discussion. I have a few things, a few meetings attended and worth sharing. The most, or one of the most important and most exciting is, of course, the most recent regular meeting of the Sewer Authority Midcoast that I participated in with Councilmember Alafano. We welcomed, this is the first meeting with our new interim general manager. And it was, I'll just describe it as pretty buttoned up, data rich, to the point and appreciate her work in the interim role. It's interesting, so Vivina Hausen is the name of the interim GM and really is, understands her role as the interim, doesn't want to be the full-time GM and has just a wealth of experience that she's bringing to the table. Things that you want to have your GM do, like we have a discussion and about a topic and the GM would, she would come back and say, "Well, my experience in this community was this and best practices this and you may want to factor that in." It was just really refreshing and really, anyway, it's going quite well. So we're really happy with that and we continue to thoroughly enjoy all of our Sewer Authority meetings. I also attended the meeting with the Chamber and Main Street Merchants to discuss the Main Street Bridge Report. And I think, I counted, I think that was about my 20th non-organized meeting on the topic. I was also informed at that meeting that I, that I'm not listening, which is interesting, but I continue to strive to want to hear what the public has to say. You know, we have to make a decision around how to handle the Main Street Bridge and I think it's challenging to get a lot of input. I think it's important to get a lot of input and of course, there's a lot of conflicting input and, but it was, I appreciate that coming together and Alan, I appreciate your leadership in helping that turnout be so good. So that was attended by Main Street Merchants and members of the public and the press and I thought it was a good discussion. Also attended the council of cities meeting and that was where the leadership from all the elected officials collaborate and that was good and actually have some good insights from that I'm going to bring back for our, the work we're going to do on the general plan. I twisted Carol Matsumoto's arm and she talked all about their award-winning plan and how they approached it and have some nuggets of good information there. I also participated in the North Fair Oaks Community Festival, which is in unincorporated Redwood City. And that was just in collaboration with our county supervisors and with Sheriff Greg Bunks. That was just good local community support with lots of programs and services available in that community. And that is all the meetings and, but I also want to note that something very important that on August 26th, by a vote of 37 to 0, the full California State Senate reconfirmed Vice Mayor Mueller for an unprecedented fifth consecutive four-year term to the Water Quality Control Board, San Francisco Bay Region. It doesn't say it on my notes here, but I believe that may exempt us from some, no, no, it doesn't exempt us, no. Okay. But anyway, John, congratulations on that. That's, your dedication to the community and to the region is noteworthy, so thank you. And Alan, yes?
I forgot one thing, I wanted to comment about the meeting from the business roundtable on that Friday. There have been some numbers thrown around of potential impacts, dollar impacts to merchants on Main Street. And I think it's very premature to try to throw numbers out unless you really truly have something that you can back this up with. And I think people need to understand, as we talked about our priorities for the bridge, one of the highest priorities is the minimal disruption to Main Street. So will there be any disruption? You can't do something like this and not have some impact. We all understand that. But our goal is to minimize the impact and I think as we get farther down the road, we've already agreed, once we've decided on an option, we're then going to look at what we can do as a council, the city, as a businesses, to try to minimize the impact from the outside on the businesses. But I think it's a little premature to throw numbers out that talk about what that impact's going to be. I don't know that anybody's got a study that they can point to that really shows how it's going to be impacted and it clearly, it's not going to be anything like when double slide closed because that cut off a main artery to our community. This is not going to do that. So we have to be very careful as we discuss this going forward to make sure we're talking very clearly about facts that we can, we can document.
Thank you. Naomi, you want to say something?
I want to thank Alan for that because when I read that in the paper, I just about died, $5 million. I mean, it was like, holy moly. So I'm glad you brought that up because I don't know how they got to that figure, but I mean, no wonder people just panic, but thank you.
So I wasn't going to share this, but I will share this, that I've reached out to and have had several conversations with economists from nearby prestigious universities. And I have one more conversation scheduled and I'll bring my findings from that or my observations and the information I get from that back when this is on our, on our agendaized calendar to share my thoughts on that. So I'm getting some other input on the topic, so just to let you know that's happening behind the scenes. And with that, we'll move on to public forum. Public forum, this is really important, so Mr. Moore is here, but it's also important to note, Mr. Moore is the high school principal for our own Siobhan Smith. And I wanted to welcome you and, sir, you have the mic.
Make sure she puts the timer on.
Can you hit the, one second.
Just before I came in this evening, I was talking with Mike Crilly, the former superintendent of the Jeff High District, who was a vice principal with me when I was the principal of Oceana and then at Westmore. And Siobhan and I were nostalgically looking backward at her wonderful high school career and all the issues that were brought forward during that time. It was the 80s and not an easy time to be leading schools. But my name is Tom Moore and I am running for a seat on the San Mateo Community College Board. I was previously the president of Kenyatta College for about seven years and before that, I was the superintendent of the San Mateo High School District and before that, the principal of three high schools in the North County. I spent many, many hours in Half Moon Bay over the years at athletic events and other kinds of activities here and it's a community I would really like to be able to serve at a very high level when I hopefully become a member of the Board of Trustees with the college district. One of the matters that I think I can assist the college district in accomplishing is working with Half Moon Bay to help decide how we have a greater presence here. When I was the president of Kenyatta College, it was very clear to me that students would have a very difficult time getting from, from here to there. The community colleges today are more important than they have ever been. They are the places where affordable, accessible higher education is delivered to most of the people of the state. 60% of all the undergraduates in the state are in those 112 community colleges and it's true of this county as well. So it's very important that we work with our communities to be certain that we have classes that are accessible, the kinds of classes, both getting ready for the university and for vocational kinds of programs as well. And I would look forward if I become a member of the board, working with this community towards that end. But it is something that I really want to do. I've been retired for two years from the college, but I remind myself every day of the importance of the community colleges in this county and I really hope I'll have the opportunity to serve in that capacity. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks for coming and thanks for introducing yourself.
My pleasure.
And thank you for the fine influence you've had on Siobhan's development and growth.
She's wonderful.
She is wonderful. Thank you. And with that, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent calendar. Is there any discussion or a motion?
I would move approval of the consent items 1, 2, and 3.
And we do have a special parameter around the consent calendar tonight. There is an ordinance, therefore we actually, you read the ordinance, which is number 3.
I will read number 3. City initiated zoning code tax amendments to Title 18, zoning of Half Moon Bay Municipal Code, number 1, amending Chapter 1806 definitions at section 18.02.040 to delete the proportionality rule. Number 2, amending Chapter 18.06 residential land use R1, R2, R3 to add section 18.06.035, R1B3 development standards and 3, amending Chapter 18.22, use permits to add sections 18.22.055, on sale alcohol outlets and sections 18.22.240 through 18.22.340 wireless telecommunication facilities.
And just a small correction, that is, the last one is 18.22.240 through 18.22.370 wireless telecommunication facilities. Little different, okay. And so the motion is on the floor, is there a second?
All second, as amended.
Thank you, motion second, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Are you opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number 4, the General Plan Committee item.
This evening, we have a recommendation for you of how to form a general plan advisory committee commonly referred to as GPAC and this will be part of our general plan update. And you've had some discussion at previous council meetings and tonight, we have a whole formal program and our administrative services projects manager, Alex Kajikian, will present the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The item before you this evening is the establishment of a general plan advisory committee and adoption of the mission statement and principles of participation for the GPAC. Dyton Batia was hired by the city council on June 18th, 2013, to prepare an updated general plan, local coastal plan and zoning code. As part of the update process, the city is expected to establish a general plan advisory committee. The GPAC will be an integral part of the general plan update and will keep residents and organizations, stakeholder groups, informed of the progress of the general plan update, provide constructive feedback on draft policies and make recommendations to the planning commission and city council at key project milestones. The mission of the general plan advisory committee is to participate in and provide input as it relates to the comprehensive general plan, local coastal program and zoning code updates by promoting balanced consideration of a range of perspectives on issues affecting Half Moon Bay, serving as an information conduit to stakeholder groups, encouraging broader community participation and providing continuity of participation throughout the entire public visioning and update process. The GPAC will consist of 13 members and three alternates to provide a diversity of viewpoints that are broadly representative of and reflect the diversity of the community to the greatest extent possible. The GPAC should include members representing the following groups. Five representatives from, for residents at large, two representatives from conservation, sustainability, environmental advocates, two representatives from the real estate professionals and/or developers, two business community, commercial landowner representatives, one planning commissioner, one recreation committee member and three alternates. Anyone wishing to be considered to appointment representing the resident, real estate business or conservation community must complete a general plan advisory committee application, which will be available online at the city's website or at Half Moon Bay City Hall in person. Each applicant may apply for one represented group category. The application period will be open for two weeks. Appointments to the GPAC will be made by the city council during a council meeting. During the council meeting, applicants will be given the opportunity to provide the council with a brief presentation about their background and indicate why they wish to serve on the GPAC. Following the presentations and discussion, the city council will vote to appoint members in each represented group category. In addition, three alternates will be appointed by the city council from among all the applicants. The planning commission and recreation committee will each recommend their respective appointment and designated alternate for the city council appointment. The general plan advisory committee principles of participation document also provides principles of member participation, highlights meeting guidelines and establishes basic conduct expectations of committee members. The timeline that Dyton Batia envisions is a process that would take just over two years to complete for final council approvals and includes approximately 10 to 12 general plan advisory committee meetings. It is recommended that the city council establish a general plan advisory committee and adopt the city of Half Moon Bay General Plan Advisory Committee mission statement and principles of participation. This concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Please, Mayor.
Thank you, Alex. This is very comprehensive and I do like the application. The willing to serve form has been updated specifically for this, so I think you've done a real good job with this. What are the dates that they would be coming to us as a council and what is the date for the deadline of them to turn us in?
The date that it would be coming to council would be the October 15th council meeting and then the date to apply, we still have not, because I was, this was a draft copy, unless you guys made any changes, I didn't set a specific date yet, but it will be open for a two-week period, but it'd be in the near, near future. Near, near, near. Like within two days, probably.
Okay, well, that's very near. Great. John?
Yes, thank you. I read this over a couple of times and I think it's a great package you've put this together, kind of very clear of what is expected of our individuals of the city. And I can't not, cannot emphasize enough how important this is to give back to the city. And I know everyone is busy, I know everyone doesn't have time, but this is an opportunity for a diverse group of individuals to step up and say, "You know what? I'm ready to give back to my city. I'm going to be here for many, many years to come and I kind of have a lot of different viewpoints and things like that and so..." And so I just think, you know, there's no excuses that we can't put together these people. I just, I don't want to beg, but this has to come forward. And this is not something we dream up. This is a mandate by the state of California that we put this together, and it is long overdue, which we've all said before. And I, on page 31 of our staff report, under the principles of participation, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I know there's going to be periodic meetings, but that's life, we all. But I really liked one of the bullet points down there about the balance of the stakeholder goals. And the encouragement of community participation, I think, is very, very important. And then without a doubt, for all of us that are sharing and giving of our time and our family, is meeting attendance. I mean, we do have rules, and they're going to have to follow them. And on another page, 33, the Form 700, we can't be afraid of those things, you know? There's no more secrets in life. And so Form 700 forms are something. And then also, I appreciate the basic conduct that I think, hopefully, government, and I talked to this a little bit with Jackie, how divisive it can be with individual personalities. And, you know, I have to say, we're just very fortunate that we can agree to disagree up here at this council, but respect each other's opinions, and I think that's very important. And so I guess you understand where I'm coming from. I totally support this, but it has to come forward with these individuals. And I know we're going to be asking a lot for them to step up, but it's two years, it's not a lifetime, and so I can only, if anyone wants to stop by and visit with me about this, I'm on the highway for the next 62 days. So you're more than welcome to come by and throw a pumpkin with me. But I can't, excuse me, emphasize enough the importance of us putting together a great group of individuals. So thank you. And come forward, please. And thank the individuals that are already in the audience that have stepped up, because it's a challenge to do, but it's part of the democracy that we all live in, so thank you.
Thank you. You hear me?
Well, John's going to be in the pumpkin field, but if you want to come talk to me, come to the high school softball field. But I'm mowing every day since I fertilized. Big mistake. But I want to say that this is really complete, and if anybody really needed any kind of information, Alex, he had everything in here regarding attendance, and if you're not at meetings, then you're not going to be on the committee. I think this is really, really well done. It gives everybody all the information they need and exactly what we expect and what we hope people will step forward. And I really want to thank you, because this is really complete. It's probably one of the better forms like this that we've had for people to participate. And I agree with John. Please step forward. We do need you. We don't want, you know, hear from people and that they're on the blogs. Come to us. Come to, be on the pack. I mean, that's where we needed all the, you know, not criticism. We need to work together, and, you know, constructive kind of input that we want. And this, I think the five of us have always said that, we want that constructive input. We're not afraid about getting input, you know? And once we make a decision, we've made this decision, and that's the way it goes. But I think we need everybody's input. And I, some of the things that Lauren and Alan and I had talked about, and I think we need to talk about, is whether these people need to be Half Moon Bay residents or if we can use coast side. So I think we need to decide that before Alex says, okay, we're going to open it up. And then we have people apply, and then people say, no, we didn't want those, we didn't want just coast side, or we just want Half Moon Bay. So I think that's really something that we need to discuss before Alex says, okay, here we go tomorrow morning.
So I agree, that's an important question, whether it's open to coast side residents or only Half Moon Bay residents. Any other comments or thoughts on that?
Mayor, may we comment for a minute?
Apparently, if it's a near, near comment, yes.
Regarding some of the business communities and developers that you have on there, they might not be strictly Half Moon Bay residents, so you'd want to keep that in mind.
And I think what I was going to say was, potentially not even coast side residents, but I mean coast side residents, but maybe there is, they own property or have a business, and some of those folks don't live even on the coast side.
But no, I agree with that, although I think that the five residents should be residents. I think we can all agree on that one. The only one that I'm a little hung up on is the group of conservation, sustainability, environmental advocate. I also kind of feel like they need to be part of the community. I'm not sure, I want to have somebody from Sacramento coming here to tell us what they think should happen in our general plan. I kind of think those two people at least should be coast side residents. I could live with that, but I don't think they should be from out of the area.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, if I just may comment again on Councilmember Alafano. I think there's a great pool of individuals from the coast side land trust, you know, possibly, that might come forward on that. I don't envision, you know, the president of the Sierra Club being involved in this. That's my personal opinion.
Half Moon Bay residents. I think that's who they should be. This is our taxpayers. We pay for a lot of things, there's a lot of us on the coast. There should be Half Moon Bay residents.
May I share my opinion? So I appreciate the discussion. With regard to the conservation and environmental advocates, I think we need to think about the audience for our general plan. The audience, obviously, a primary audience is going to be the coastal commission, and we need to keep that in mind. And I think having vested interest in our community, being from our community, is really important. And I would be comfortable with those individuals being coast side, even regional, but out of the area, I think, is not applicable. But whether it's for the residents of Half Moon Bay, I'm comfortable with that, or whether they're coast side residents, I'm comfortable with that. And from there, how do we get consensus?
Well, again, I think if you look at the guidelines for voting, it's a majority of the vote. Is that not correct? Did I read that in there?
There is no voting, actually. It's just a consensus recommendation, actually. So there is no actual voting going on. It'll be just a recommendation to the planning commission and the city council.
Right. And then the planning commission will vote and refer it on to us.
That is correct. Or there will be some joint meetings as well between the planning commission and the city council.
I've updated my, my position has evolved. So let me suggest this. In addition to the residents at large, who must be residents, what if we require that for the next three, the conservation, real estate professional, and business community, commercial landowners, that one, at least one from each of those groups is a resident of Half Moon Bay? Does that make it cleaner, still allows us the flexibility, so someone has a business or owns land but doesn't live in the community? Well, maybe I'm making it less, more complicated, actually. I'm continuing to evolve.
I still have faith in the planning commission and us to make the final decision on that. The recommendations are coming from this group of people that, you know, they were not appointed, I guess, how do I frame this? They were not appointed or elected to make the final tough decision.
But they are going to have a big input in developing it. So I kind of like disagree with you, John, because I think they are formulating, and they're going to be having a consensus kind of building. So I'm really kind of torn, too, because I'm trying to, because I would think, like, we have developers, we have real estate professionals. The one that I'm really concerned about is the commercial landowner. I'm not sure how many commercial landowners we have.
I was going to, so Councilmember Patrick, it could be two from the business community, actually. It doesn't have to be. It's just, it's just an open-ended that you can have, you know, from that group of people.
Yeah, I think anyone that owns commercial property would be eligible, right?
Of course.
Yeah. That's a commercial landowner.
Right. But that's what I'm saying. So I was trying to see if we had Half Moon Bay residents that were commercial landholders or whatever.
But it could be just a business owner as well. It could be just a business owner. It's either or, could be both.
I have a suggestion. So residents, of course, are residents. For the developers, real estate professional, and the business community, one of them could be a coast side resident. But as far as conservation, environment, they both should be Half Moon Bay residents. How would that go with everyone?
I evolved, too, and as we were talking, I think it's very, I mean, a business owner could live somewhere else, have a business here, they have a direct connection to Half Moon Bay. But I do think, because this is our community's general plan, LCP zoning, this is a document we're going to live with for a long time, I think there's enough of a pool out of 13,000-plus people, we can find two people in this group that live in our town.
So summarize, Alan, what you're, are you aligned with Marina on this, or are you saying something different?
No, I agree with Marina. So if I could recap, residents are residents, developers, we agreed, you know, one of each, they could be one here, one from somewhere else. The business community has to have some tie here, they have to own a business or be a commercial property, have landowner, and then the conservative, sustainable, environmental needs to be a resident.
I agree with that.
Okay.
So I need a motion on this, please.
I would like to make a motion and again, thanks staff for putting this very concise, very challenging staff report together, so thank all of you involved. So at this time, I would move to establish a general plan advisory committee, GPAC, and adopt the city of Half Moon Bay's general plan advisory committee mission statement and principles of participation.
With several modifications. That would include requiring that folks representing the conservation, sustainability, environmental advocate category be residents of the city of Half Moon Bay. And folks representing either the real estate professionals and/or developers category and/or the business community and commercial landowners category be coast side residents. Is that correct? What, at least one person from each of those categories would be coast side residents?
And one.
And, oh, I see, I didn't get it. So one, at least one of those would be a Half Moon Bay, city of Half Moon Bay resident.
And the other would be?
And the other one would at least, at a minimum, be a coast side resident. Nope. Yeah, see, I think we have it wrong.
All right, so let's backtrack, because I think...
I withdraw the motion for the moment.
Thank you, John. And so let's retrace that. So Marina, let's use the list in the same order we have in the packet, so we don't jump around, just go top to bottom, residents are residents, and down to the bottom.
So I'm reading from the sheet, and it starts with residents. So residents are residents. Developer, real estate professional, we have two members. One can be a coast side, one can be a resident at Half Moon Bay. The business community, commercial landowner, one can be a Half Moon Bay resident, one can be a coast side resident. Conservation, sustainability, environmental advocates, both are residents of Half Moon Bay.
And would you like to mandate that the person from the coast side in two of those categories be from the coast? I mean, so they could also be a resident, correct? You could have two Half Moon Bay residents.
We could have two Half Moon Bay residents, but there is room to have a coast side resident. Yes.
Is there a discussion? If not, I have a comment.
Yeah, just a quick discussion. I'm still confused on the developer, real estate professionals. So if there's a property owner that lives in Bull Breath, Montana, they would still be eligible. Is that correct? Okay, I thought we were going to have one possible developer that was not from the coast side. I mean, there's property owners that don't live here.
So if I may, if I may, so obviously, this is a significant opportunity to contribute to our community, and while we're hopeful that there will be a lot, I think that there are a lot of opportunity, a lot of people that will want to be involved, and ultimately, it will be up to the council to select this committee. If we put so many refinements on this, I don't want to restrict our pool from which we, ultimately, we get to choose. We can choose all Half Moon Bay residents, we can choose no Half Moon Bay residents. And I think I would like us to recruit and get a big pool from which to choose, and then choose the best candidates, knowing that we do have some preference for Half Moon Bay residents. But if, so if we go through each category and say, oh, this, one of this, one who lives here, one who lives there, and two, one lives here, but one can live over there, if we overcomplicate it, I think it makes it even more difficult, as opposed to just getting the candidates in. And knowing that we do have a preference for local candidates to represent the local community, because they're obviously of vested interest, we can then ultimately choose the best candidates for the position and not have to prescreen for them. Let's just get the candidates in.
What I would do is make a motion that we accept the general plan committee, adopt the city of Half Moon Bay General Plan Advisory Committee mission statement and principles of participation with the caveat that the residents will be Half Moon Bay residents. We're currently putting no restrictions on developers, business community, and that conservatory, conservation, sustainability, environmental advocates, again, Half Moon Bay residents. So we're leaving the two middle ones open to who's in the pool, but the first one and the last one, we're saying are residents.
So my concern is, it's okay if they're going to be local, I mean, local, you know, Northern California, whatever, but if you're talking about people that are going to come out of state and all that, you have to look at, are they going to come to the meetings and stuff? I mean, for us, I mean, then we put them on, then they're off. So I think we, yeah, we need to be careful that we don't open it up so widely that, you know, we're going to have people come here, and then they find out, oh, well, they're not going to come to our 12 meetings, and they're going to...
Well, the first step is to apply. The next step is to get accepted and selected for that position and take that position. And I don't want to predict any outcomes, but it's, a hypothetical outcome could be two candidates, one owns, both own a business in Half Moon Bay, one happens to live within 20 minutes of downtown, one happens to live in Butte, Montana, and then they have other professionals. We can select the best candidate for the position. Just because somebody applies from Butte, Montana, doesn't mean we have to accept them. We don't have to accept anybody. We can get all the candidates and say, you know what? None of these are good enough, let's do it again.
That's the one part I hate about this process, from people applying, come, and this, and then we say, no, thank you. I'm very soft about that kind of stuff when it comes to people coming and giving their time and things. And so, yeah, okay, I'll go along with what you guys said, but, I mean, I initially didn't even want them to come to council at first, because I, like, when we do, when we did the planning commission, we'd have all these people come here and interview them and all that, and it's uncomfortable for a lot of people to come here in front of a public meeting and be interviewed like that. It's different when you're in a room, and you can do that, but you can't do that. So I was hoping that staff was just going to appoint, but I'm open to that. I just think we just, if we have the final say, I just, okay.
So I guess in general, I get a sense that there is a preference for local applicants. And Marina, I want to get your comments on this.
I don't want anyone from out of state submitting an application. That's a waste of their time, it'll be a waste of our time for them to stand here in front of us saying, I do blah, 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 but I live in Montana. I don't want to hear from them. I want to hear from local people. I want to hear from Half Moon Bay residents. Do allow time. We have people who are professionals who may work up and down the coast and are invested in the coast side, and I'm okay that there's an opportunity for them to be in this. But I do think we have to put... But I do think we have to put some parameters on there, because we do have some expectations. And we do have some people that will waste our time in going through a process. So let's eliminate having them bother us and we bother everyone else in their time for this.
Yeah, on page 32 of the staff presentation, there is appointments to GPAC will be made by the city council, okay, we got that clear. During the council meeting, applicants will be given the opportunity to provide the council with a brief presentation about their background and indicate why they wish to serve. I didn't feel like we were going to be interviewing them, am I wrong or correct?
It is...
I'm not comfortable with interviewing them.
There is no interview, they're just given the opportunity, if they wish to, just like any public comment, to come and address the council.
I wanted to read that, though.
No, no, I knew that, that's why I said before, I did not want to do the, and I went with this because we were not interviewing.
If we keep this up, I'm not going to support item six on the agenda pretty soon.
If I could, I'd like to amend the motion to clarify that all four categories should be Half Moon Bay residents, and I think if we discover we have an issue with that, we can deal with that, but I think this is something that's for our community, our general plan. I think there's enough of a pool, again, out there for all categories, the more I think about it, that we can go out there and ask our residents to participate. If we have a problem, then we can address that later. So I would amend my motion to make them all residents.
All right, so the current motion is clarifying that all the positions are held by Half Moon Bay residents. Is that correct, Alan?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I've come full circle, thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number five, Strategic Plan Progress and Matrix Planning Update. Thank you, by the way, Alex, for your report and your work.
Mr. Mayor, Qualcheck, tonight, we are continuing a process that began roughly about a year and a half ago, actually, and we had a number of public meetings where the city council created a strategic plan, which they actually hadn't had in a number of years, and we had to go through a lot of additional research and work to be able to help fit in the different parameters and the different projects that we were going to be able to address in the coming year. So you all formally adopted it in February or March of this year, I'm sure Jan knows when that was, and we committed that at least twice a year, we were going to be bringing it back to you for a progress report, because we do want this to be a living document and one that doesn't sit on the shelf. So therefore, tonight, our finance director, Jan Cook, is going to be providing you that update, and we are also including information from the matrix planning report as part of that update.
Good evening, Mayor Qualcheck and city council members. The matrix, let's see, first of all, can I get the next slide? So the, this is the strategic plan that was adopted in April of this year, and as Laura had indicated, we're going to be providing an update twice a year. What this strategic plan shows is that it's a five-year plan, and that we're phasing the projects by year. And so we have a handful of projects tonight that were slated for 2013-14 that we'll be giving you an update on, and as part of that, we will also be updating you on the matrix planning piece of that, because that was a key strategic project within the strategic plan. So this is a list of all the strategic projects that we have, and I did provide an update for all of those within the staff report, and I'm just going to highlight a couple things from this list. First of those is related to the organizational analysis. One of the exciting things that we have done is contracted with the M Group for our planning services, and they are now in place and are fully transitioned at this point. Also, we are underway in recruiting for a number of our key positions, so this will help us get our organization stabilized and be able to help us move forward in our strategic plan. Also, the debt reduction plan was a key decision that the city council made this year, and I'm happy to report that we are actually in place with our escrow agreement for that, and we've moved our monies, and at this point, we are fully locked into our trust agreement, and that means that we will be paying off the debt early, and it'll be almost a $12 million reduction in savings. So at this point, that's done, and staff will just be monitoring that plan from here on out. Also, the tourism plan is also underway. We have contracted with the city chamber of commerce, the coastside chamber, to create a marketing plan, and there's a number of aspects to that plan. One is related to the visitors bureau, and they'll be working on social media and ecotourism as a destination for us, and a lot of marketing. As far as what's been accomplished in that area, there's been a new ecotourism map that has been published, and there's also the 13-14 Visitors Guide has been published. There's also the Half Moon Bay Improvement District, Business Improvement District, and their focus will be on expanding social media, and also related to Google AdWords and making sure that Half Moon Bay is coming up as a destination. And we've been working, they've been working on the web ranking and getting the properties onto JackRabbit, which is an online reservation tool. And then also, there is the bi-coastal program that the chamber's working on, and that will include a loyalty and rewards program. They've also purchased 2,500 bags and a number of postcards that will be marketing this program, and they're also looking for bus signage that will be marketing this program as well. And then there's also been a group that's been working on the downtown signage for this, for the gateway, and this design and locations will be further defined as we go. And also, there's economic development within this plan as well, and I'm happy to report, and you might see in the coastside chamber news today, that the market tech firm with Mary Bosch has been hired to do this economic development, and that will be in place by mid-November, and that will be focused on expanding the city's employment base, as well as reducing out commute of local residents. So really trying to bring that employment base into Half Moon Bay. Those are the key highlights that I'm going to focus for today, and as we get through this, I'm happy to take any questions that you have or any feedback. Moving to the matrix planning progress, there's a number of key highlights as well. First of all, M Group was hired and is in place. Secondly, they've doubled the counter hours, so now this means that a resident or an applicant can come to city hall anytime during opening hours and go ahead and put in their application, which is great, that's actually doubling of the hours. Also, there's been a number of cycle times that have been improved, one is in the plan check area, and that's now a three-day cycle time, and then also on the completeness letters, where they send them out to talk about whether the application's complete, we're now at 20 days, rather than the standard 30 days. There's a number of items, obviously, that you can imagine that are going to be going on in the next three or six months as M Group moves forward, and really, the focus on this is really going to be developing a process, procedures, and tools that are clearer and more efficient for the public and for the staff. Some examples of this include handouts for each type of application, so when the applicant comes forward, they know what the process is going to look like, they have a checklist that tells them what they're going to be required to do and what the process will be. It'll be a lot clearer for both the internal staff as well as for the applicant. Also, simplifying the intake procedures for things that are over the counter that are a lot more simple, so that people can get in and get out a lot sooner. So this would be things like sign permits, tree removal permits, they can just be handled very quickly. And then also, we're going to be updating the website with a diagram of the planning process, so that'll be a lot, it'll be online, people will be able to view that. There's a number of other steps that are also going to be in place in the next three or six months, which are detailed and more detailed in the staff report. So at this point, I'd like to open it up for discussion, and any comments or questions that you have.
How much of the discussion? If not, I have some. So, great work, by the way, first of all, excellent report, but also excellent work on the strategic plan and the planning process. I do have a question on the one slide previous, and Jan, it's okay if you don't have this off the top of your head, you mentioned, I can always follow up later, you mentioned the improved plan check cycle time is three days versus, I didn't know what it was compared to.
Five.
Five, and, thank you. And the last one is the improved zoning map tool, and can you describe that to me one more time, please?
The zoning map is now accessible to people at the front counter, and it is more accurate, and so this will allow people to go online and be able to see the zoning more clearly when they're at the front counter.
Great, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? John?
Mine might be more with to the city manager, just refresh us. With planning, is there also a little bit of a breakdown with building? Or could there be with that, and just for general discussion?
Sure, so oftentimes, if you aren't using permitting services on a regular basis, it's sometimes hard to distinguish, people don't often, at the top of their heads, know the difference between a planning permit and a building permit. And I'm not aware of any current breakdowns between those two right now. They do need to work closely together on a number of permits. The plan check cycle time that's been improved that Jan is referring to actually is when the building department is working on something. It's the planning department needs to double-check and say, yes, it doesn't need to go to planning, or, yes, we've already approved it, and therefore, you know, it fits with our guidelines, our conditions of approval, that kind of thing. So the two groups need to work closely together, as far as I know, they are working closely together. We have had a recent change in personnel at our CounterTech for building, and so I do think often, when there's a loss of knowledge of some, you know, knowledge of people who are working on particular plans, the new person needs some time to get up and to speed on those in the building area. So there may have been some slowdown in some of those, in the building permitting side of things due to that change of personnel. Does that address the question?
It does, I'm trying to clarify to a sister-in-law in Ventura that was replacing her windows, and she didn't quite understand that building stopped her from replacing her windows, you know, and I said, well, you got to go through the process. So it's not just Half Moon Bay, it's everywhere. That planning and building are very challenging lives, as our planning director well understands. Or a roof, or a deck, or anything that needs to be replaced to the current standard.
And especially if you're talking replacement, all of those officially are building department items. However, one of our larger goals in this process and with some of the hiring that we're doing is to try and make sure that permitting process works well at all levels and all departments. So we really are trying to get to that point. I do, I have, I have had great, I've been offered the opportunity to work in other cities, as you all know, and every single city I have ever worked in, the highest number of complaints continue to be in the permitting process, because sometimes, when you get a no for an answer, you think the process is broken.
Is there somewhere in this process, in the future, the ability for someone who is applying for a permit to be able to track where they are within a system?
Yeah, that's definitely a very good goal. I do believe that that is, that is not going to happen in the next three to six months, for them to, say, track something online. That is a longer-term goal. We are so basic at this point that we internally don't even have a permit tracking system, we try to use Word and Excel sheets, and so we, you know, fully admit we have a long way to go. And there are many improvements that we can implement.
This is excellent, I will tell you, as I look at it, I'm very concerned that we're not even going to begin to look at the Cabrillo Highway properties until fiscal 15-16. And I, you know, I'm sure we all sat down, and I'm sure I agreed to this too, but I do think that's much farther down the road than I would like to see it. At the worst, I'd like to see it somewhere in fiscal 14-15, but I understand the concerns. I guess my only point is to the council and staff, if there's a way we can, at some point, speed this process up and move it sooner, I would feel more comfortable, because we all know how long, once we start it, it's going to take years. And I would, I'd certainly like to be having our property ready to go when everybody walks into town and says, what's for sale? And we're like, oh, we've got something you could look at. And I'm just, I am concerned that 14-15, just to start the project, is quite a ways down the road. So I don't know if we can make changes, but I'd certainly like us to think about that.
I agree with you, Alan, I think, I think some of our challenges is we have to have our house in order, so we can actually tell a person, here's the process you have to go through, because I think that was what caught everybody in trouble a long time ago. So I think we have to get to where we have things in order as far as permitting and zoning, and clean up all our codes, so we can be clean enough to say, here's this property, you can do X, Y, and Z to it. Otherwise, we're going to be in trouble again.
And I agree with Marina, and you know, it seems like it's a long ways, but it's really not. It's right around the corner. But when you think about, absolutely right around the corner, Alan, when you think about it, though, all the things that we need to get in order, it's going to take a while to get them in order before we can even decide what can go in there with the zoning and with all the general plan and all that. So I think with the starting of the general plan and all of our circulation things and stuff, I think will get us closer to that Cabrillo Highway property, seriously.
And for me, again, personally, I think one of the items was the east-west, west-east crossing of Highway 1 north of 92, in my opinion. It looks like we're doing a good job south of 92, but I am, that could all be part of this whole completion there, and that's going to be very important to that Cabrillo Highway property for us out there in the future.
So I would have been most comfortable if the Cabrillo Highway properties was in the 12-13 fiscal year, and we're well down the road, which made me very happy, and obviously, there's a lot of other priorities down here that have to happen. I don't know that they're prerequisites. I think it's helpful for some of these other things to be done, but this is not, I think, the day to review that and potentially move it. This is the day to say, hey, this is the status of where we're at, and we will have a strategy planning workshop thingy at some point, and that's when I think it's going to come up, and my strong preference is to look at the feasibility of moving it up, if the constraints are resources, our staff time, it's not possible, or it is possible, I want to understand that, because if it can be moved up, I would like to do that. I also know that everything can't be number-one priority. Only the things that I like should be number-one priority. But I, so I appreciate everyone's comments and on the report, and I think it's a great report, a great update, and I also agree that I'd like to see the Cabrillo property item accelerated. I don't know that it's possible to do that, and so I just, I know, I understand both sides of that coin. Do we need a motion to accept the report?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to accept the report on Strategic Plan Progress and Matrix Planning Update.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number six, and reaffirm City of Half Moon Bay Code of Responsible Practices, and Naomi wins.
So, council, this evening, again, this is something you have asked to review periodically, and so tonight, the city clerk, Siobhan Smith, is going to be giving you the staff report.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Before you tonight is the City of Half Moon Bay City Council Code of Responsible Practices. It's here for you tonight for review, modification if you choose, or reaffirmation of the document. The Code of Responsible Practices provides a set of agreed-upon values and actions
The Code of Responsible Practices provides a set of agreed-upon values and actions that reflect the city council's commitment to leadership and service. These rules don't take the place of the other laws and rules that apply to the legal responsibilities of city officials. This is a separate document that the city council developed in 2012. And as part of your process of developing this Code of Responsible Practices, the city council directed that we revisit this document once a year and have council make any modifications or changes to the document if you see fit. And also have each council member sign again on a yearly basis their commitment to this code. So this is here for you tonight to review and make any changes that you suggest. And I'm just here available to answer any questions. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Shavon. Is there any discussion or comments? John?
No, I think we're continuing on with that. I might just, I see there was, from staff's perspective and legal perspective, there's no recommended changes, number one. I might just ask what our current status is on ethics training. Are we, we're, I'm sure, all current. And I just would want to make sure when the time comes that we're prepared in time to go through our ethics training. But I think we're good for a couple more years. Is that correct?
Yeah. And this is actually separate from the state, the AB 1234 required ethics training. And you are required to do that every two years. And I believe that sometime in early next year, you will all be up again for doing that training. But you're all good for now.
Just an interesting point. There are some cities in Los Angeles that refuse to have a Code of Ethics and Behavior. I know, as strange as that sounds, but there were several, and they left the California League cities and created their own Orange County Cities Group. But they don't feel that they need to have any kind of guidelines for public conduct.
I'm not aware of there being any misconduct in the LA area. Oh, wait, no, there was a lot. Yeah, interesting.
I would move to accept and reaffirm the City of Half Moon Bay's City Council Code of Responsible Practices.
I second it.
Motion is second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, a moment.
Hardly, yes.
Senator Frazier?
Yes.
Senator Frazier?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. And with that concludes our September 3 city council meeting. Thank you for coming. Thank you for viewing. Good night.
[laughter]
[inaudible]
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 [inaudible]